Obviously, so we won't do that that we typically do. Action on the agenda would be first. You all have the agenda in your board packets. Are there any changes, Mr. Donovan?
No changes to the agenda.
I make a motion expected, except the agenda that I presented.
I'll second.
Motion from Tom, seconded by Diamond to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda stands as it is. Action on the minutes?
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on September 9th, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Motion from Rick, seconded by Karen, to approve the minutes. Are there any questions relative to the minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Vouchers are next.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve funds, ten vouchers totaling $1,85,277.59 and building fund vouchers totaling $38,478.
I'll second that.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Tom, to approve vouchers in the amounts that he mentioned. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The vouchers are approved. Public participation does have one individual signed up. I will invite her down to the podium/microphone/whatever we can help her with, Renee Steve Bush.
I'm going to be really brief with my comments, but it's about Agenda Item 5A. I have had the pleasure of sitting on the Benefit Advisory Committee, and I just want to publicly thank the Board for allowing staff members, both support staff and teaching staff, to have a voice on that and ask questions that involve their health coverage. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Without having signed up, does anyone else have anything they would like to add? Thank you. We will roll on. Legislative update. Brian, do you have anything there?
We could relax for the legislative update.
Alrighty, that would be good. Which brings us to what will be an ongoing topic, of course, is referendum update, and I would invite Mike to give us the up to the minute.
Well, first of all, I just want to say as a school board member in my home district in Cambridge, and we had our annual meeting last week, when I pulled into your parking lot and saw all the cars here, I thought, well, this is impressive to have the community come in and really be engaged in the process, so we had to.
They were engaged.
They were engaged, exactly. So, Steve Clavon is here with me tonight, but he's just back from vacation, and he's still got a little bit of Mount Rainier lack of oxygen, so. Really is kind of an exciting transition for the project. You guys have been in this for a long, long time. My reports up to this point have been about the design phase and design phase activities. I'm happy to report that while we still got that designing process going on, but also I'm also now going to report on a number of construction phase activities. So, but first with the design phase, I think you did receive my report. I won't read every bullet point in there, but I do want to highlight some of the items. Importantly, our design team is engaged on a daily basis, but we continue to meet every other Thursday for a significant amount of time, bring various groups in to focus on particular design aspects. So that continues on on every other Thursday basis, and then quite a bit of work, of course, in between happens. But as a result of those meetings and PRA's work, we did issue construction documents, bid documents for the elementary school projects on Friday, September 13th, and J.B. Cullen put those together as bid packages and sent them out on Monday, the 16th. So I'll touch on that a little bit more in a moment. I think the other piece that I want to make you aware of is that we do still have one more component or feature of the design team that we're looking at and trying to bring into the process. We are seeking proposals from acquisitions, and this is really for the high school, as we look at the band, choir suites, as well as the pool, and any of the large common spaces. We want the opinion of acquisition to make sure that we're creating appropriately live spaces, appropriate bamboo spaces, and you're going to be happy with that. So, ongoing process of looking at some proposals there and introducing them into the high There aren't any other bullet points here that I want to highlight, but moving on into the construction phase, we've had, as I said, a number of very purposeful and important features in advance of actually swinging hammers that are part of the construction phase that leave a combination. So I believe in my last report, we talked about a potential bidders conference that we wanted to conduct, and the point there was, first of all, to generate interest in the project, to make sure that the bidding community was very aware of not only the building projects, but how they would get rolled out and when their opportunity would be to participate in the bidding process. You never quite know who's going to show up to that. That's not necessarily a feature of every project. Often, projects just go out into the streets, so to speak, which is some of the bid houses. High square foot is the digital bid house is the most common, but contractors have to find it. They have to go out there and say, what's out there for bid on? They have to find their project. We wanted to be a little bit more proactive, get it right in front of them, answer any questions that they would have, make sure they feel like this is a good, solid opportunity for their firm, and we had a very good turnout. That was conducted on September 10th. I led that alone with Ann Swanson of J.B. Cullen, and we had 16 firms that participated, over 30 individuals that came, so that was very good. We've also left there, understanding where we had holes, so we can look at it and say, for instance, we had good coverage at the proposers meeting from electrical firms. We had good coverage from HVAC firms. But where did we not have firms at that conference where we know we're going to meet them? So we identified a few of those, and that really instructed us as to how we got to go out and make some more contact within the industry. So, that has happened, and on October 8th, bids for the elementary schools will be due, and they are due in two formats. We've talked about this a little bit in the past. The one common format is that J.B. Cullen is your construction manager, will receive bids for things like I talked about, electrical work, HVAC work, painting on that one. And then we have a separate process for work where J.B. Cullen wants to be a bidder of the project. So for instance, masonry. Masonry is a fairly big part of what we're doing at the elementary schools, because we've got some additions to the space, and there'll be common masonry units that get laid up as a part of that job. So masonry was a key one for us to separate out into a different process, talk directly to potential bidders, make sure they know that they do in fact have an even playing field when bidding against J.B. Cullen on the job. So I'm happy to say that we're going to do well in terms of participation on that particular category, but that's just a thing. So those are the two things. Generate some interest, make sure people feel like they have a fair competition. J.B. Cullen then conducted a pre-bid tour. Now that is a common element of the bidding process. So proposers, conference, pre-bid tour. They actually went to the facilities, walked through and said, hey, remodeling is a significant part of what we're going to accomplish at the elementary schools. You need to see this, so you're not just giving us a bid based on the plans that you've rolled out. So see it, understand what the complexities are, know how you're going to mobilize on a site that is fully operational. This construction will happen during the school year. So it's very important that that pre-bid tour happened, and in fact, it's a mandatory portion of bids that are received. Not everyone was able to make it on September 19th, so we do not know if we're making it. So we're setting up additional pre-bid tours. I think we're focusing in on later this week yet.
Four dates that they can choose to be able to get a site, except the mandatory, so they're going to have to make one of those.
So that's all is happening. October 8th will be a key day for a number of us. Bids come in throughout the day on bid day, they are due by 2:00 P.M., but it's a process of seeing what you get throughout the day, plugging in, and there will be that spreadsheet that says budget for this particular scope of work, bid number one, bid number two, bid number three. Eventually, we'll highlight those bids, see how we did against the budget on that particular land. All of this will culminate in thoroughly vetted bids that will then come to you on 14th, October 14th, at your board meeting. And hopefully, at that point, we're coming to you to say, we've received bids, we want to proceed with the low bid in the following categories, we have met our budget, we want to point out maybe a couple of outliers that might merit more discussion, but then we would seek your approval to move forward in engaging contractors and proceeding to the construction phase. I think the only other thing I wanted to talk about, there's a bullet point in the report that indicates our anticipated construction schedule. This is exactly the same as what you saw in last month's report. The only thing different is where I've highlighted the middle school addition. We've had a discussion about how that schedule for the middle school construction was put together, how long ago, how formed it was, whether or not that duration is valid today, and I asked that we challenge those assumptions and look at the schedule, knowing now that we have very defined plans and specifications, with the goal of delaying the start of construction. The schedule is that we would start construction in March, which will mean March, April, May of disruption to the middle school and the academic environment there. If it's possible for us to delay until after school starts, then we would have one academic calendar year of disruption versus one plus or two academic calendars that we disrupt. So I feel good about our opportunity to make that change, but we'll get back to you on that soon. And I think that's all I had to report, but I'd be done. Any questions?
I'm just curious, Mike, for my own interest, how do you receive the bids? Are they all electronic, or do they come hard copy copies? Do they come directly to you? Do they come to district office? Or do they actually get by 2:00 P.M. on deadline?
So good question. The great preference is that they all be digital. Certainly, the industry has moved in that direction. We still give an opportunity for people to submit via hard copy by 2:00 P.M. Those hard copies, J.B. Cullen will take a number of faxed bids. We don't have a fax machine. They'll take fax bids, they will take hand-delivered bids to their office. The scopes that Public Development is receiving will come in, emailed, or hand-delivered copy to the district office. Email, you get an immediate timestamp. Also, very easy for us to quickly say, got your bid, everything's appropriate. It's your bill, or we got that question.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Huffman? We thank you for your efforts and look forward to more updates.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that'll push us into new business. First on that is discussion and possible action on temporary construction easement agreement between City of Milton and School District of Milton for Milton West Elementary. Mrs. Chashans.
Alright. In front of you and in your board packet is a temporary construction easement agreement for Milton West. When we went through and took a look at all the different sites, all the elementary school sites, we had to determine, you know, as these projects are ongoing during the school day, what's the safest way to get construction materials and all that good stuff to that site? And West gave us the most challenge, seeing that it's primarily landlocked and the one access point is a very highly trafficked area where kids get dropped off and picked up, and we wanted to avoid that as much as possible. So, the city was again a great partner with us to help us come up with a solution as to how we can get these projects going and how they will work with us to get this process started and completed. In your packet, really the overview shows the construction area that we fenced off. We're going to utilize the driveway that we put in two summers ago for construction vehicles to come in and out and get access to the site, get unloaded, and all that good stuff. It also shows where, you know, construction vehicles will be parked and how the flow of that construction site will look. As construction takes place during the school year, that easement agreement actually expires a couple of weeks after school gets out in June, so Cal will be responsible then to restore that area that they used all school year long, and will then take deliveries on the side of the building that is owned by us. So that's really a description of it. And this was at the city council last Tuesday, and the city council unanimously approved this as well, so. Any questions?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the temporary construction easement agreement between the City of Milton and the School District of Milton for Milton West Elementary School.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion from Karen, seconded by Mike, as you just heard, to approve a temporary construction easement for our project at Milton West. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Next, we will entertain discussion and possible action on a resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $1,900,000. Ms. LaPointe.
Yes, so today we received our two bids for both banks on credit. Both banks came in at an interest rate of 2.90 percent. Both banks offer outstanding customer service, so all things being equal, we recommend going to the bank that was not awarded the bid last year. Last year, we awarded it to First Peter Bank. Year before that, it was Bank of Milton, so we're recommending going to the bank this
Okay. I'm going to entertain a motion to consider this. Next one move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Diamond, to authorize, adopt a resolution to authorize temporary borrowing from Bank of Milton in an amount not to exceed $1,900,000 at a net interest rate of 2.98 percent for a total amount not to exceed $1,900,000 pursuant to Section 67.12 Sub A, Sub A, Sub A, Sub 1. I read that in its entirety for the motion makers' benefit.
That's what I didn't want to say.
I'm sure you did. So with that motion on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll roll call vote it. I guess I'm going to my right. Tom?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Karen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you. And we are up to action on open enrollment alternative applications, as is a regular course of business, it seems.
We're getting down to the end now. I think they should definitely trickle off or halt completely, but we do have three transfers in and three out. Note that none of the outs, as we discussed earlier, these are not students that lost and they never attended with us, so it was due to a recent move.
I make a motion that we accept the open enrollment alternative applications as presented.
Second. Motion from Karen, seconded by Rick, as you just heard, to approve the open enrollment alternative applications. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion clearly passes also. That exhausts our new business, which brings us to our miscellaneous, and first of those is the action on staffing reports, which you have a copy of in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing reports as presented.
Second.
Motion from Rick, seconded by Karen, to approve the staffing reports that you have in front of you. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I would like to just say, I don't know everyone on the list personally, but Wendy's on there, and I just want to take a moment to recognize the amount of work that Wendy's put in. The school district, especially over the last twelve, six months or so, I've had the chance to work with Wendy, and she's put forth just outstanding efforts to help her district, and I would like to say that she would definitely be missed in all this working with her as a frontline committee.
I would echo those comments, too. I was going to make the same type of address, but I don't have to. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Staffing report is approved. Gifts and donations, one of my favorite parts of the meeting.
That's all. I'd like to approve a motion to approve $2,151, correct?
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Diamond, to accept gifts to the district for this month in the amount of $2,151, and as always, with our grateful thanks to the community for all the different ways that they support all of our kids. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The gifts and donations are gratefully acknowledged. Here, meeting dates. Mr. Donovan? When do you need us next?
We, actually, tomorrow night at 6:30 in the district office, we have an expulsion hearing. Again, that starts at 6:30 tomorrow evening in the district office. On October 14th is the next regularly scheduled school board meeting. That's back at Milton High School, and that also starts at 6:30. And we need to schedule an H.R. Committee meeting sometime within the next two weeks.
Do we also need transportation?
At some point, yes.
At some point, okay.
Tomorrow night, August 6th, H.R. Thursday through the following week.
Next week, I'm in France, on Tuesday and Friday.
So, the following week, you help her?
It's going to be a jam that week.
Certainly not next week, but the following week, early in the week, okay.
Early in the week.
We did have policy meetings set for a very early morning, I think it was October 2nd, but I don't know if we want to talk about having that be the regular committee meeting or a committee of the whole board if you're going to look at the investigation procedures, which would, I should be separate from our regular policy meetings, but.
I think our goal was to have the whole board get that process kicked off, don't you think?
My understanding was that the policy was supposed to be as the whole board.
Yeah.
And my, I had a couple of reservations, that my employers changed, so the morning about 12:00, I will not work.
Okay. Let's get that as soon as we can.
Right, let's maybe.
Following that, I mean, would the following week be better, Brian?
I can do it October 2nd, and you can't do it in the morning.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not, my availability during the day has been limited now that I'm actively employed.
Coincidentally, October 2nd is a tough day for me also, so I guess, could we look at the following week?
And did you want to change your present?
Let's work up an agenda and see what we want to try and cover, and we'll see what makes sense there.
What we're trying to determine, I spoke with Shayna a little bit this evening, is that the recommendations that came out of the investigations, and I'm assuming that's, those are the recommendations that the policy, that whole board wants to talk about for policy, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Shayna's going to look at those and determine whether or not they're actually policies or procedures.
Sure.
And from the surface, it looks like the majority of them are procedures, but she's going to check into it, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
That was kind of my question, based on what they kind of presented last time. It didn't really, it seemed more procedural than policy driven, so I was kind of confused why it's not just being handled at the policy level, committee level, that we're making it a whole board state.
I would, I guess what I would say is that you probably want to have a policy, I mean, obviously, everybody knows a policy is what you do and procedures, how you do it, but if you're doing a procedure, then we should at least say what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Right, I agree with that, but I just don't know why we're going to do it at the whole board level, why the committee can't do it at the committee level, like our structure, and then present it to the board.
I can answer that, and that is that there's other members that have an interest in participating in that, and I think we should give them the great enough opportunity to participate.
Yeah, I think, because of the unique circumstance here, I think I would like, as the chair, to say that the whole board is involved. We'll sort through them, maybe sort them out a little bit, if you will, as far as the recommendations, whether they're procedural or policy driven. If they're in fact policy driven, I think then that comes back to the policy committee to generate some sort of a recommendation that would be brought back to the board, which ultimately, all of us have the object or option to approve, et cetera. So, I think, having thought it through, I think that's the procedure I'd like to follow, is do the whole board, sort it out, and then whatever the policy things are, comes back to committee level and come through the channel the way that it should, if there's any changes that we think we need to do, additions, changes, et cetera. Is that agreeable?
I agree.
Okay.
I'm a different.
Are we good with dates, then? Is that what we're?
So we're looking at H.R. and now also policy, we'll make a decision.
And with, with Rick's work schedule, Wednesday's work best for policy, correct? Yes. And Wednesday mornings seem to work. No?
I have an issue with Wednesday mornings as well, because I am now employed, and my schedule and my days off change every week. So I know a week in advance when my days are, like I know next week's schedule already, but I can't guarantee that I'm going to be off on the 7th in the morning.
Well, we'll try to accommodate as many people as possible.
No, I think we need to accommodate the whole board, Tom. That's the purpose of this.
Okay.
Well, if that's the case, then you pick the time.
Can we do it?
I'm the committee chair, it's my responsibility to set up the meetings, and it's for the, this is for the policy committee, and if the whole board is invited, that's fine, I welcome the whole board, but it's hard to find a date when it's, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting, when everyone can make it.
What about, what about meeting before our meeting on the 14th, like we've done habitually?
I can't do it. I can't do it. It's not a meeting of the board, it's not a meeting of the committee, so we do have to accommodate everybody as much as we can. I'm a working man, and I'm retired, I wish I was, but therefore, mornings are on for me. I can't jeopardize. I'm a working man and I'm retired, I wish I was, but therefore mornings are on for me. I can't jeopardize my important.
What about after the board meeting on the fourteenth? We're out here.
Okay. It's kind of clear, bigger than that, probably do a little bit.
A big agenda on the fourteenth.
Well, let's, let's look at the, let's look at the agenda and pull off non, you know, compulsory things and knowing that we have to meet. We did, I did talk to Rich about doing a, uh, an evaluation of sorts in a closed session with Rich, and I targeted that fourteenth meeting. We do have some flexibility there, we can, we can kick that back to the following meeting if we want, um, if this policy stuff is, is gonna supersede that. If we're all gonna be there on the fourteenth, I think let's do it after the meeting.
I'll do my best, but I know that my husband's above town and I have two kids at home, and a meeting that works fourteen hours, so depending on how long that meeting goes, I'll have to excuse myself.
Okay, everybody weighed in, what is helpful and usable or workable? Alright. Okay, that exhausts that, and we got one more thing to do, and it's a presentation, and with my apologies to Al, I think we could've worked you into our agenda sooner, but we were trying to figure out when you were available and how long some of our stuff tonight was gonna take, and, and certainly it exceeded what I thought it might, so from Mr. Tuukendorf and Al Yeager from Associated Financial Group, uh, we're gonna talk about the, uh, outcroppings of their meetings with the bank group and whatnot, so go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Uh, so Al and myself are here presenting on behalf of the Benefits Advisory Group. And with this, this is going to be an update based off of culmination of all the conversations that we've had since last November. So, to be able to identify what our primary focus was, was the well-being of all employees. And this included members of, um, the HR committee, Diamond, Mike and Tom, as well as the Benefits Advisory Group Committee, which was members that are here tonight and some other members that are not, which is administration, teachers and support staff. With that, our main focus was developing those employees. And moving away from trying to focus on a reactionary to, let's be proactive. And then the secondary was employee and employer savings. Can we reduce those costs that are associated with what the staff pay, as well as what the employer pays? And then, as I mentioned before, this journey started back in 2018 and has continued all the way up through September eleventh for our last Benefits Advisory Group meeting. And there's, with those total of nine meetings, we focused on why are we meeting first and foremost, and identifying what we need to do. And once we got to spring of nineteen, we wanted to be able to see what those incentives would be for wellness creators. We wanted to see if it was possible to consolidate to an insurance carrier. Can those insurance carriers be able to take on a full group like the school district in Milton? And then can we add an onsite or a nearsite clinic that would be dedicated to the school district in Milton employees? And then potentially offer a health savings account in conjunction with the current health insurance plan that we have with our HRA. And then also take advantage of different wellness programs that are, uh, that we want to be able to offer to our staff. In the summer of 2019, um, the HR committee decided to form a subcommittee, which would take a look more in depth and in detail to find out, can we consolidate? And if so, what are the pros and cons to both our insurance carriers? And at first, we were just gonna identify three or four individuals, and as the summer got rolling, we decided just to open it up to all staff that were on the HR committee, or I'm sorry, the Benefits Advisory Group. So it was just opened up to everybody, and people came and go and went as their schedules were the summer permitted. And during this subcommittee meetings, um, during the months of June and July, and beginning of August, we focused on questions that were shared with each insurance carrier, with Dean and with Mercy. And then we conducted interviews at the end of July to dive deeper into those responses. And Al will now talk about the responses that we received from Dean and from Mercy.
Good evening. So, in large part, um, what you see from your packet as a whole, uh, includes first and foremost some of the Dean response, and just to kind of repeat something, or at least rephrase something that Chris had stated, that there's the same, you know, the definition of same and same thing over and over and expecting something different, although if there's something worth with districts throughout the state, political areas throughout the state, that has been abundantly clear, is healthcare is very reactionary. And, uh, what I would say is probably the thing that on behalf of the committee was most apparent in the discussion was they, the regression part was how far they evolved, they gave the Dean health system and SSM, and what we, what was observed in comparison. Uh, some of the things from, uh, the analogy I would use real quickly is instead of waiting for people to fall off the cliff, they're building upon some positive foot, and with the, and understanding of let's not wait until uh, individuals have a significant effect. So some of the positives identified, what they've seen with the district has seen, what the presentation demonstrated, with many of the other peer districts where they've partnered and established, whether it's onsite clinic or whether it's onsite resources, early and often, uh, provider options for dependents outside of the normal Dean coverage area. What does that mean? Whether it's a retiree or whether it's a, uh, a college student, they have in-network benefits across the nation available to them. Health educate employees, unchanging of the carrier's health, they feel that the committee has questions on if this were to be consolidation, how much additional resources would be available to walk the, um, individuals that would have a change involved? They can much of the burden off the administration. Um, consolidation also reinforced another minus two percent for the upcoming year with additional caps for, uh, two years, three years out as well, um, to add three point nine percent. And two-thirds or sixty-five percent of the population does have Dean, and when we look at it from a savings year by year from a projection standpoint, you see the, and this is relative, from the proposal relative to, um, what we've experienced in a dual choice average over the years. There's, there's a willingness in a consolidation, um, to attach the multi-year, what are these additional resources? And you see the three hundred and sixty thousand year one, uh, one ninety-nine, year two, three hundred and forty-seven, year three. And year two and year three do also include the, uh, an additional nurse practitioner or nearsite onsite type clinic resource, um, in the projection. Yeah, that, um, and this, the savings we all present, both the employee and the district savings statute warrant the amount. And moving forward, I'm sorry, I'm on my. Some of the challenges were brought up in the meeting and the discussion, um, can Dean handle the additional, you know, one-third of the population membership? And what had specifically been mentioned was the, uh, with the SSM hospital president attended the meeting and specifically made the commitment to adding the staff needed, um, and as far as changing the doctor, doctors, if someone made this, that would be a disruption for sure, um, for, um, part of the, part of the population. And meanwhile, um, the most aggressive cap we see in 2021 to 2023 to represent the HMO caps, a three point nine percent. Uh, the point of service cap, which has, is pre-determined choice, uh, sixty-one percent. Meanwhile, as far as, um, first here, the discussion in, okay, so we maintain, the, really the two options that the advisory group looked at was do we maintain staff's call dual offering, or do we consolidate the Dean, as we see? Um, after going through the process, they're just absolutely not comfortable consolidating with Mercy, uh, group. And in large part, not only because over two-thirds, or two-thirds of the population would be disrupted, but also, um, reasons mentioned earlier that Dean had some of the preventative and some of the more, um, I'll say, holistic approach in the front end, and again, speaking of that, maybe I'm pulling them, identifying the act. Uh, Mercy here, um, did acknowledge early that Dean upill, um, challenged in terms of, you know, the majority of the staff as well being disrupted if they were telling each other. Um, so from an options standpoint, um, keeping everything staff's call. Obviously, status quo would certainly, um, be the easiest to deliver in and of itself, however, um, status quo wouldn't be status quo from the standpoint of keeping both provider systems with a tight, unlikely to the sample change plan designs. And then tight, unlikely to, when I say plan design, without pocket costs and or any contribution by the staff.
And it's important to know that everything would be staying consistent in the fact that the six percent for support staff would stay the same, the twelve point six percent would stay the same, unless the board wanted to make changes to that. Um, and that could be a reality if status quo is maintained for any kind of, uh, reduction in expense.
As far as, um, you know, option two is migrate to Dean quickly. Potentially looking to be set from caps until 2023, with the potential to improve in 2024. Wouldn't mitigate the need to increase the contributions, that shouldn't mitigate, uh, needing to use deductibles. And the following year would not require it to achieve a minus two percent, would not require, it would be the exact point of service, would not need to be in HMO. Um, the additional years again noted, it would be in HMO at three point nine for the following, uh, two years, with the point of service caps.
And if the board decided to go down that route at that time, there's also an option running side by side. It's a little bit more maintenance behind it, but that would be an option. And then with the scheduled events, uh, on September fourth, we talked at Human Resources Committee to review the PowerPoint. On September eleventh, we talked as a Benefits Advisory Group to confirm the PowerPoint, and again, to make reference that Al and I are here presenting on behalf of them. This does not reflect any kind of opinion that I have or that Al has about Dean or about Mercy. Um, and September twenty-third is today, resuming this presentation, as well as within your board packet was the frequently asked questions. So we know that, uh, coming into today, this is gonna generate a lot of question and concern from our staff, as well as our retirees. So we shared out, um, the frequently asked questions with our staff, and we've been answering questions as they come in, working with Dean and with Mercy. And we are also mailing that information out to our retirees and asking them to give us a call or shoot us an email if they have any kind of questions. And then on October fourteenth, um, the, uh, Dean will be coming onsite to present to the board. And then if the board so chooses, that we, um, make the motion to consolidate or stay status quo. Those are the two options that are coming out of the Benefits Advisory Committee.
I think the, uh, other item on the October fourteenth, the, the agenda effectively would have the Dean SSM book, uh, do a presentation, uh, certainly an opportunity here first hand. As far as the medical professionals are, what it is that they are posing and how it is that they, uh, would administer.
Okay, and then coming back to our initial focus, um, was the well-being of the employees. And, uh, secondary was the savings to the employee as well as to the employer. And I'd like to, um, point out that we have a number of members from the Benefits Advisory Group here that are in the audience. So, um, I would ask, is it okay to ask if they really want to present as well, if they would like to? Are you okay with that, Joe?
I'm sorry, I was signing papers.
No worries. Um, are you okay if I ask, uh, some of the other members of the Benefits Advisory Group, if anyone would like to? Uh, speak or say anything? So if there's anybody in the audience, um, actually, first of all, raise your hand if you're part of the Benefits Advisory Group. Okay, so there's a few of the three. Would you guys want to say anything, or, um, is there anything that Al and I missed on presenting?
Well, I think you captured well, yeah, I think it was very, captured very well. One of the questions that I feel like a lot of people did have, um, everyone was given a fair shake for Mercy and Dean if consolidation is a relative strong stone, and I just felt like, um, overall, the presentation, they, they encompassed what we found from the presentation.
Chris, can you tell me what this onsite clinic consists of? Does that mean onsite, like in a school building?
Absolutely, that could be an option. It's either onsite or nearsite. If it was an onsite clinic, that would be Dean setting up on school district property, where we would have to move, say hypothetically speaking. At district office, we have that general commons area, where as you migrate into MECS. If we set up something there, again, totally hypothetical, that would be an area that they would be able to come on with a nurse practitioner to be able to help our employees, instead of our employees going directly to the, um, Dean doctors. So if my child has an ear, and she's had a few of them over the course of her life, I could bring her in and say, okay, yes, it's a special pleasure. Here infection, instead of going directly to the doctor, it would be at the nurse practitioner. Nearsite, Dean would set up somewhere within the Milton community, a clinic that we would be able to send, um, our staff to, just not on, not on district property.
Can you just add one thing to that, that, that was discussed at the, at the committee level, and one of the things that was brought up was that there's not a lot of difference between nearsite and onsite, because if we have a location on one of our sites, uh, it would only be onsite for the people that are in that building. Everyone else would still have to travel to that location.
How many, um, how many lives does the district cover? You know, like staff dependents, everything.
One second.
That's fine.
The, um,
I mean, if you don't have the topic right now.
Your frequently asked question?
That had the, that had our employee numbers.
Yeah, so it's roughly three, three members, it's three acts of what the employee count is on the plan, so that roughly three hundred and ten employees on the plan, it's something in that nine hundred member range.
About three thirty employees through payroll deduction, and with about eighty-seven taking cash out.
So when you say three, you're just saying averaging three?
Yeah, it's all around the plan.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, um, dependents, so college number, middle, high schools.
Yeah. Yeah.
I will add that when we did this engagement with Mercy and Dean, there was two very different commitment levels that were brought to the committee. Dean showed up with a panel of six or seven staff members, ranging from the president down to the person who's in charge of customer service, to, I mean, they brought a lot, and they answered a lot of questions, they were very engaged, they came very well-prepared, and then, and talked about how they plan on adding staff to accommodate for our staff and their families. Mercy showed up with two people that had a lot less to offer, and had a lot less commitment to being able to provide for our families in the nursery district. I mean, it was very night and day difference of how they could achieve what we're trying to do.
See, I feel they had to add new staff to the community, you know, like they'll throw out, I'll put like six or seven hundred more people.
Chris, if it's onsite, like, we'll have liability, are we looking at? Do we have to carry extra liability for, you know, manual procedures that don't go requiring planning?
I'll have to look at your then get back to you on that, right? Thank you, ma'am.
I think one of the things to mention too, with the, on a nearsite, is that staff would be just for our employees, and not the general public. So if your chances of getting into an appointment in a very quick amount of time are much greater with that, with that method, than if you're waiting to go into a clinic that also services non-members.
I guess I would like to say I certainly, for one, appreciate all the effort that folks have put into this. I have stayed on the periphery, if you will, from the committee and the bag group and whatnot, and hats off to everyone that has had some input there. It feels like this has been as well explored as we possibly could, so kudos to everybody that did that. I'm surmising that, given you've got all the input from Dean and Mercy that we're going to get, we've got the input from the advisory group slash staff, is the ball now in our court to pick a path here a little bit?
That's correct.
And if that's the case, timeline, I saw the potential implementation of July 1 of '20. The sooner we decide, I would think is advantageous, because it does involve changes for some folks potentially. Should we take an action on this next month, or as soon as we possibly can, so that we know where we're headed?
Yeah, that was the, that was the reason for the timeline included. By rolling it out this evening, the board has all the information. We will have time to get input from the staff, and the board should have enough information, opportunity to ask questions if they don't understand, or comments about the consolidation effort. Have those answered by the 14th, and be ready to vote by the 14th, because as was stated, this is going to be somewhat of a traumatic experience for a lot of people, and there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of information sharing, and the sooner that we can get this process rolling, the better. Whether it be changing from a Mercy doc to a Dean doc, or having questions on pre-existing conditions, or whatever the case may be, the more time that we give them prior to June or July 1st, the better informed they will be.
Can I add too, that it's also more if the board decides to stay status quo? Just with our current plan, we would, that's an option that you have to make sure you're providing to us, and then you would come back, if it was status quo, you'd come back with other alternatives, and I think that would have to be then kickback finance, of all, potentially continuing with our current cost.
I guess one of the, did I understand correctly when you showed the slide there of savings, should we consolidate? And consolidation really only involves Dean, it doesn't, we're not, I don't think we would consolidate toward Mercy because of the reasons you folks identified. Were those savings both for the individuals and for the district? And certainly, I think the number all of us want is the impact on the district, you know, we have to make that, while we do not want to downplay the impact on the individuals, but if, at least if we could see that broken apart, even from a budgetary standpoint, you know, if there's a chance, you know, I think ultimately that's what drove this, is a chance to impact our budget, you know, in future years in a positive manner, so if we could take a, take a shot at those breakouts a little, I think would be helpful.
I think the, the option on staying status quo, it really wouldn't be that, because both Dean and Mercy have stated that they have kept their premiums increases lower with the knowledge that we were going to be looking at a single provider down the road. So they kept our increases pretty reasonable over the last couple of years. Now, if we decide not to do that, my guess is the chances of us keeping those premium increases low or negative are gone. So it's, it's not really staying status quo, it is as far as having to do a provider, but it's not going to be as far as the pay coming out of your paycheck. It will be different.
Absolutely, that's if, if the board decides to go down that route of shifting that cost from the district to the staff.
I have a question for Al, and this is a little crystal ball-ish, I don't necessarily know if you're going to have the right, if I can phrase it correctly. Is there advantage to us to potentially do things in three-year chunks here? I mean, I think one of the options was, was, you know, look at things annually and react accordingly, versus, you know, the commitments that they've made to us with these caps on premium increases, et cetera. Is that at all, what do other people do? I mean, is there benefit to being locked in for three years? Or are you subject then to some, some much more significant increases as they know that you're ultimately ripe for readjustment, or is that?
So after three years, is there a concern, kind of the question?
Sure.
And I think the short answer is, is good if you have, both parties are willing to compete. And because of that, even if after year one or year two, it's identified as a failure, the locking of the plan is a one-way lock, so the district could say, you know what, we want to go back to Mercy, invite Mercy back into the offering if we go down that path. So as a result, I think that's one of the...
That would be our leverage, I guess, with whoever you were contracted with. It's like, you have to play nice, or we'll go to somebody else.
And at any time, we could definitely go out to bid to any other insurance provider. It does not have to be Dean. And one of the misconceptions out there is now are we eliminating our leverage? Every year, we could go out and say, okay, we want WPS, we want WA trust, we want Lucrez Bush Shield to come in and bid. We're not stuck with Dean, like Al had said, we're not just handcuffed. They are to us, but we are not to them.
That makes me more comfortable. Okay, does anyone else have questions for either Al or Chris?
I would just really encourage board members that have been able to participate in the bag group, if you have questions, to either reach out to us and ask if you want to speak with some of the staff members that were involved, or ask me, Mike, or Tom, because the majority of us were almost every meeting, or switched off with each other, to really come to us beforehand of the actual 14th meeting, because we can provide you that information as well, among Chris and Al.
May I have one?
Absolutely.
I do think for the presentation, that is important for the SSM book to present the why of additional resources, and the why of, and preferred timing of if and when makes sense for that clinic cloud, because in the end, I think potentially one of the real same thoughts or questions, like, from a number standpoint, what makes sense, doesn't make sense. You know, there's a critical map that you need to achieve, and from a plan copy, those are all continually important sections from a board standpoint that need to be addressed tonight. They're the committee tonight, professionals, I think they're the ones that need to answer that.
Very good. Anybody else? I have exhausted my agenda. Thank you, Chris and Al. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second to the turn, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Thank you very much.